All right, I call the Village of Ryback Planning Board to June 21, 2022 to order. First item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing all from June 7th for the Terrapin Restaurant. Josh is here.
Hello.
Evening. So, um, I guess one of the questions we had was the, is there a legal agreement that's been signed off by people for the parking lot?
We had, me and Richard agreed on the agreement and you guys said you wanted to have your attorney look at it. And so that's who I was waiting on. I mean, Richard and I are fine. We've been neighbors for years and.
Has it been circulated to the attorney, our attorney?
It has.
Okay.
Why don't we have a response? Did they?
I, I don't know, Chair.
It was a letter today from Dutchess County Planning. John, did you get, you got the letter?
I saw it.
So they have questions about downlighting and dark skies? Is that what they're?
Yeah. You know, they, they want to make sure, I'm trying to remember what our code requires, but no light above the night, horizontal plane into the night sky. So it's got to have, you know, full cutoff, dark sky compliant lighting and most specifications will say that if they are. And so what we need is a copy of the specs for the lighting that's proposed.
Yeah, I mean, we're absolutely going to apply to that, but I feel like that's also the same as the village code for lighting, is it not? I mean, you can't have any uplighting as the village code.
No. Let me see what the village code says in terms of temperature though.
These specific rules because you're on Route 9 that they concerned about, you know, lighting, hitting light on the road because it's the main state highway and also the dark sky issue.
I think also because he borders a residential district.
Yes.
And he's in the special sensitivity overlay.
Right. So also you would need is the specs for the proposed lighting fixture that assures us that it's dark sky compliant and will cut off. Those are the two phrases you're going to look for. And, and also what the temperature is now. Our code doesn't require a temperature. But generally speaking, you want it in the 3,000, 3,500 range, something like that.
Oh, is it, is it good enough, John, for me to just tell you that I will be compliant and we can have, you know, the, that as part of the conditional approval of this, you know, instead of having to come back in two weeks to have Warren draft something up. I mean, any lighting we have, we'll just make sure it's compliant. I mean, it's not that, like I wouldn't do anything other than that. Why would, why would I do that? You know? Like obviously I'm going to want it to be compliant. I'm not going to want to have to fight with the village.
Generally speaking, on the site plan, you put the specifications of the lighting so that we can see it and it's confirmed in the.
I understand, John, and I completely get what you're saying, but I mean, considering this is my fourth meeting now and you know, my season's waning to have to go two weeks because of this, which was thrown at us a day before the meeting and Warren's away for two weeks now. So, I mean, I just want to try to get this plan and I, I can give you my assurance as to doing that, but it's also like this common sense. I think you guys would agree that I'm going to, I'm not going to all of a sudden come up with a different type of light, you know, just to spite you guys. Why would I do that? I mean, it's not like I, I would obviously want to be in compliance. I'm not going to want to put a light that annoys people.
Well, we can weigh that. There's other things that were brought up at the public hearing. I want to hear your response to those too, before we think about voting on this.
Of course.
The second thing they pointed out was some hatched accessible path between the hatched handicap parking space and and the sidewalk. There's no for anyone using the accessible space. I don't have the plans.
John, can you put that in real people talk terms and not county planning terms?
You know, they have a ADA space with an aisle in between it. And generally speaking, you want the aisle to connect to a sidewalk.
Right.
Level or has a ramp that's ADA compliant so that the people don't have to go out into the parking lane in order to get to the sidewalk. I don't have the, the site plan before us. Maybe you could pull it up and you could take a look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, that one. If you can blow that up right at the parking spot on the bottom.
So alls we're talking about is a little stub sidewalk that would take from that crosshatch to the regular sidewalk.
But is this from the lot to the sidewalk? Is that what they're talking about?
No, from the crosshatch area here. They, let's see the handicap space.
Right.
The aisle next to it is where you unload, if you have a wheelchair or whatever, and then you want to be able to get to the sidewalk without going out into the driveway entrance. So you just put a little stub sidewalk that connects that aisle, that crosshatched area with the sidewalk along Livingston Street.
Move it up an inch, one inch and you'll see it.
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying. I, I mean.
Yeah, there's the sidewalk. So we just need, it's like a couple of feet of sidewalk from the hatched area to the side.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand what they're saying. I mean, I do also see that they did not say that he required that, that they said that they just recommended it. I absolutely would do that. And if that's the sort of thing, you know, that's, that's nothing. I mean, obviously compared to the whole project, makes sense to do it. I would do it, but you know, once again, I, I would certainly hope this is not something we're going to wait to have to get an actual change on the plan before you can approve this because I, I mean, I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah. I, I, I think my make it anyway is that is Ryan, why have, when did our attorneys get this, this, this note from Richard?
They received the referral that was created between Josh and Terrapin and Richard and the Church of the Messiah soon after the meeting, January 7th.
June 7th.
Yeah, June 7th, yes.
We've had two weeks to respond and they have not responded.
Um, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for David Gordon Chair, but they also have been addressing with the mayor and the trustees, the temporary sidewalk dining. So I don't know if, you know, where are, where your referral was put in the list of priorities.
We don't have the answer to that. John, what were your other questions addressed in the public hearing?
Well, the fan was the big one, but also you know, signs to direct parkers to the shared lot, church lot. Truck deliveries, how that's going to be addressed. Additional plantings along the frontage to screen parking. Those were some of the notes that I have.
So I mean, I'll, I'll address some of that. I did send in the contract that I have with the company for the hoods and the new fan. I don't know if that was attached. Ryan, did you receive that?
Uh, was that submitted by Warren?
Yes.
Let me look.
And which fan would that be? Josh, would that be the one that sticks sideways out of the building or the one that's at the top of that vertical?
Yeah, you know, I, I have a feeling that problem or the fan that probably Rachel had had a problem with, I mean, is the old fan, which was the oldest fan that was there. It's like a very, very big mushroom. And that whole, it's not just that, like I've replaced the motor before, but I think it's the actual like blade that makes the noise, probably because of the age. Probably has like a low hum. But that's the whole thing that's being replaced. It's the old one, which is, you know, like I said, it's at least 30 years old. I mean, I've got the building 19 years ago and it seemed like a very old fan at that time. So.
Is it the one?
Fans on the building. This is the one, one of the ones on the top?
Yes.
Cause I, I had the feeling that it was the perpendicular one, the one that sticks out of the wall.
I don't, I think that the problem for her is that the noise goes over the trees. And that's what she says is that the noise goes over the trees. I think that the one that's perpendicular is low and, and that noise gets blocked by.
Yeah, I, I, I was actually, I actually walked by there this afternoon and it, and it seemed to me like the, the, the biggest noise was coming off of that mushroom fan, as you describe it, that sticks, it's a big one that sticks perpendicular out the sidewall of the building. Because I could, I could, I could hear that pretty well before I even reached the parking lot, walking towards Route 9 down.
Yeah. I mean, and honestly, the air conditioner, when it's on drowns that out too. I mean, so there are noises in that area, but from my conversations with Rachel, I do believe that it is that one of the fans from the top of the building, but and that would make sense because it's the old one.
Yeah, well, something should be done about that. I, can you refresh my memory now? We don't, we don't have the answer, the, the legal response to the agreement you had with the church. Can you refresh my memory now? How many, how many parking spaces is in that church agreement? That's in addition to the 15 that you have in the site plan.
11.
So that brings it to 26. I, and, and I guess my other question is, I think we went over this in a prior meeting. My apologies, Josh, but I think there was some older original site plan approval for a certain number of parking spaces. Can you, can you, Ryan, can you scroll up a little higher on that drawing? Yeah, keep going. There's, we're the, I think it's, keep going. Yeah, basically there's a legend here with the description of the parking spaces. Yeah, I'll see it here. I saw, I saw it on the part of the site, but scroll down. Okay, there we go. So 129 seats plus 25 bar stools. And that was declaring. This doesn't look like the one I'm looking at. We've got 154, basically 154 indoor seats, right?
154?
129 plus 25. It says that there's three spaces currently required for outdoor and five spaces for expanding, which doesn't add up to me. Again, when I walked by there this afternoon, there were 40 outdoor seats in the front of the building. There were, there were 28 in the first little alcove and another 12 in the covered porch area for a total of, right now, if anybody that walks by the building now, we'll see 40 outdoor seats in the front of the building along Route 9. And if we're asking for another 40, that's 80 outdoor seats, a one to eight ratio would require 10, not three for current and five for required, but really 10. So which is why I'm asking to refresh my memory. How many parking spaces are in your agreement that with the church that would be satisfying the outdoor parking?
Honestly, the way that that was done was that I went by what Warren said we needed. And I, you know, I hadn't even really looked at it myself and we could have said that we needed, you know, if what Warren said we needed 15, I would have asked him for 15. Warren said we needed 11 and that's what I spoke to him about. So I'm sure that, I mean, the whole thing was the in lieu of parking thing that, you know, I spoke to Richard and I had spoke to the planning board, you guys about this, and he felt like he'd be much more comfortable having the spaces rather than me doing the in lieu of parking. I spoke to him and he was very happy to have that money go his way, which would be very helpful for the church. I mean, if you, I, I guess it's just a miscommunication or at least an error on Warren's part because he told me we needed 11 and that's what he's been telling me. Now if we need 15, you know, I'm sure that that wouldn't be an issue either. We just need to go back to him and, you know, obviously it's going to be more money. But, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do. And, you know, as far as the seats go, it's the outdoor patio is listed by the health department is having 38 seats. And I see that Warren put down 25 outside and I, I don't know how, you know, it's always been more than 25.
Yeah, 38 is closer to the, 38 is closer to the 40 I counted just.
And the letter which you guys should have in record that I have from the health department, it says 38 in the front and, you know, I'd say, I guess about the same amount. I think there's less bar stools. We don't have 25 bar stools. We have 20 maybe. Uh, and I think maybe something like 129 seats. Yeah. And they said.
Well, I, I, I guess, I guess in the end, my question might be for, for Ryan or for the zoning enforcement officer that if, you know, whatever number were approved as satisfactory to handle the volume of people arriving and parking for outdoor dining. Your, you know, with the, with the number of seats sitting out there now in the 40 additional, that's 80 outdoor, that's 10, that's 10 spaces. And I just was looking for some kind of reconciliation. As to how, how those 10 were arrived at and how many might have been accounted for in the agreement with the church.
Yeah, I mean, I know Warren came up with that number, but I mean, as you guys know, I've had the same amount of seating in the back for the last two years and there hasn't, and I have not had an agreement with the church and I have not had any problem with people finding parking. I mean, it hasn't been an issue. Parking has not been a problem.
The law was suspended for the last two years. Now the law is back in effect and the planning board is required to go by the.
Oh, sure. I, I understand and I need to comply with the law, David. I, I would never want anything other than to do that, but I'm just saying as far as the actual reality of parking, there is, there's no real issue. There hasn't been. I'm not obviously expanding from what I did last year or the year before. It's not like all of a sudden there's going to be, you know, another 50 people in town looking for parking spots. It's the same as it's been. And quite honestly, it didn't increase from before I had that because the people that are eating outside were eating inside before COVID. But now that COVID happened, as you guys well know, and this discussion has been going on within the village, people want to eat outside. They don't want to eat inside. People want that option. They feel safe outside, which is why I'm, you know, doing this tremendous effort with an incredible amount of money to basically end up doing the same amount of business that I was doing before, just because I need to, because this is what my customers are demanding of me.
Normally we could say, well, you know, we'd no CFO without the CEO approving the downlighting and the dark sky issue. And I think we could also say, we'd like to see that little bit of concrete from the handicap parking, but there seems to be so many other issues that, you know, I don't know why the lawyers haven't looked at it. I'm upset about that. And I don't know why we're not clear on the signage and my warrant doesn't have the right count. So we're stuck on a bunch of issues and I, I have concerns about that.
It seems like we had the public hearing. There was a bunch of stuff put on the table and nothing has changed in the presentation. There's no new site plan that says, here's how we dealt with the fan. This is how we dealt with the setbacks on the shed. This is how we're going to deal with truck deliveries. This is the extra landscaping that was said we could take care of on the parking lot. It doesn't seem like there's been any response to the public hearing comments.
I don't.
You're expecting us to approve it without making any changes to respond to the questions that were raised.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but like the truck part, the, the parking for deliveries has always been intended to be, and this is something I mentioned at the last hearing and I didn't realize that, that that wasn't an acceptable answer, but we have a lot of frontage right in front of the restaurant now that Gary has agreed to put, you know, like a timed parking for takeout parking in the evening and deliveries during the day so that it's like, you know, three hour, 30 minute parking or that sort of thing. And it was even pointed out by one of you guys that I'm going to have an additional frontage because of the blocked parking lot entrance. So there's going to be a lot of room. I mean, like as compared to like how that's how trucks park in that area anyway, whether they're going to me or Gigi's, you know, they've been parking that way and that's a very effective way for them to park. And they'll be able to go straight in through the door there because it'll be right next to where the entrance is. My deliveries come in usually before 12 o'clock anyway.
Okay, well, the deliveries are the least of their problems. I, you know, not knowing each pan that Rachel wants replaced and not responding to that directly and knowing which one, that's really bothersome to me.
I know, but honestly, I, I did show you that I am doing work on the fans and I think it's quite unfair for you guys to say that I need to replace fans because one neighbor is saying that she hears my fan. When there's no.
Take care of the problem and, and you haven't shown us that you're going to take care of the actual problem.
I have showed you that I am replacing the fan that I think is the problem. I mean, as far as that side fan, I mean, I don't see where it's in violation of anything. That's the thing. If you're telling me I'm in violation, show me the code that I'm in violation of and I will fix it. I guarantee you that. But to say just randomly, one neighbor says that she hears a fan noise and now I have to replace all of my fans seems quite unfair to me. And I am replacing the fan. I mean, and I showed you evidence of that by presenting the contract that I have signed that I paid $8,000 so far for. So I am doing something. I'm not doing nothing. I am responding to that. I'm absolutely willing to do whatever it takes to get this done. I, you know, I don't want to, you know, be a bad neighbor. I don't want to, you know, go against any village code at all. But, you know, at the same time, I mean, I, I understand that you want me to be compliant with issues that might not have anything to do with this issue, but I don't see how fans in a restaurant, in a zoned restaurant are in any way, unless they're defective. Which, you know, my fans, like I said, one's old, it's being replaced and I'm, hopefully that's going to eliminate the problem. I mean, I have a good relationship with Rachel. She comes into the restaurant three days a week to get takeout. I mean, and she mentions it to me. I'm, I'm happy to try to help. I mean, certainly I, I mean, just as a neighbor, I want to do what I can, but at the same time, I'm a restaurant, we have to have exhaust fans. There's no, no way to not have exhaust fans.
You suggested at the public hearing, you're going to take care of the problem. You don't even know, you're not even sure which the problem fan is, at least from her perspective. I think we at least need the answer to know that if she comes into your restaurant, ask her, which fan is it? Do you want me to replace and find out if it's the same one you're going to do?
But the thing is that she doesn't know what fan it is. She just knows that there's noise in her backyard that she doesn't like to hear. She can't point to a fan and say, that's the fan.
I think she did. I mean, she said that perhaps having the roof there will help block the fan from the one that she thinks is the problem. I just, I don't want to.
She actually said she was worried that the roof would amplify. I think is what she said in the first meeting. But, I mean, and there's no way to really understand exactly how the acoustics are going to work. And certainly if it is that side fan, it's going to be blocked by the, by the side of the building and that is true.
Suzanne, you have any comments?
Well, I'd like to see him get the approval tonight, but I mean, it's not his fault that our village lawyer hasn't responded, but I mean, that is a concern. I think that should be ironed out. But I'm sure it can be. I don't know.
We have to know the exact number of spaces that, that it matches what the code requires and nobody's done that calculation that I can see on, on the plans.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I agree with you, John. I, I wish that Warren had been a little bit more thorough with that because it really like, it didn't really matter what the number was. If he was thorough with it, I could have gotten 15 spots. I just trusted him and you know, what you're pointing out seems to be accurate. I, I really don't have any answer for that particularly, other than you know, Warren's on vacation, unfortunately for me, and I do need to figure this out ASAP, but I mean, if you guys want to come up with a number that you want me to have, I could go back to Richard and I could get, you know, he'd be happy to give me four more spots and four, $4,000. I'm sure he would be thrilled about that, but you know, you need to just let me know what you need. I mean, that's the thing. Like I'm, I'm happy to do whatever I need to do. I'm, I just want to try to get this done as soon as possible. I'm, I'm not going to say no to anything that you guys need.
I, I agree with Suzanne. I am concerned that we are at fault here to some extent and that our attorneys have had this letter from Richard for two weeks and we haven't gotten a response yet. So I, I am concerned about that. I, you know.
That's, that's only one of the list of things.
One of the list of things, but.
And, you know, we could, we could pass that on the condition of approval to, but I don't know if we have the right number. I don't know if the shed has been addressed. That's in violation of the zoning setbacks. You know, there's, there's a bunch of things on this list that I have that, that I haven't seen any, any change in the plan that would address those things.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised myself, John. I thought that Warren had taken care of all this stuff and you know, I'm surprised to see the same plan because we did speak about a few things and I, I know that I'm, I'm the principal and I'm the one that is responsible for my, somebody that's working for me, but I'm just saying like I expected a new plan when I got here. And he did provide a different plan to me. So I thought, I mean, he moved the shed. I can see that with the setbacks there. So the shed has been moved.
Is it five feet from the property line?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Well, we don't know.
Well, I mean, obviously it would have to be. Unless I want, and I wanted to get it any variance, but you know, there's no reason to do that.
So what are our exact issues? We have, we have the, the request from Duchess Planning and the comment from Duchess Planning, which we agree with. The, the, the downlighting, dark sky and the a little bit of concrete to make the handicap accessible parking lot reach the sidewalk. We, we don't know what that letter looks like. I feel bad about that. We have seen the shed, John. What are the other questions was, was some signage? Did Warren put any signage down about how you would know that there's parking available at the church and where the entrance would be? Would you come in? I mean, the cleaners is probably closed after five o'clock. They could come in that way. Where are these?
Yeah, and just along that signage issue is one of the things that I raised last time too, that the signage should confirm that, you know, you can have this parking up until, but not after 5:00 PM.
Yeah, we, we agreed at the last meeting to, to do that.
Yeah, and that should be, that's part of the signage.
And that's something.
You know, be like, like any parking sign, people have to know when you can park there. They don't want to get towed away because they didn't notice they.
I absolutely agree with you and that, like David said, could easily be part of the conditional CO, you know, that I need to have signage. Get a CO. And, you know, the, as far as the entrance through the cleaners, that's, that entrance is open all the time. That doesn't close when the cleaners close.
It's just the driveway.
If we wanted to have another condition that there, you know, there is concern from neighbors about the noise and it may be a, a couple, a couple of things. One of, one of the things I would also want to see as a condition is, and this, this probably would be a question for the lawyer. That agreement is good for exactly two years. And I would want, if, if the agreement is renewed, I would, I would want to see you come back in two years and demonstrate that the agreement had been renewed. If we're really concerned about or not concerned at all about sound, then I'm wondering if as a condition. then I'm wondering if as a condition, we could just say if if there are any complaints that measurements will have to be taken. And the code says, you can't have anything that's eighty decibels between the hours of seven A M. and ten P M. At any property line on the lot from which the noise emanates.
Any decibels is remarkably loud.
Okay, well, then that that might be it.
That's way, way beyond that noise that our fans putting out. So if we were trying to do
Josh is pointing out, this is subjective. The 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 objection we have is subjective. And I'm just looking for a way to how can, how can we, how can we make it an objective if we're going to say we would like to see you do this thing? There should be some criteria.
So just to jump off what Jeff has raised, the options in front of the planning board is you can close the public hearing tonight and continue site plan review to the July meeting. And you can give time for the lawyers to produce their opinion or their insight and input, as well as have Warren produce the updates to the site plan because ultimately David's signature is going to be ending up on some version of the signature of the site site plan. Because as chair, he needs to stamp the site plan, so he's on the line. If there was anything to go beyond, as well as the other end of things, is the enforcement aspect. So if you have a a rather long list of conditions of of approval, you guys need to consider the other end of the practicality of enforcement.
If we were trying to do this, that this will be the longest list of conditions I've ever seen. The two conditions from the Duchess Planning, the condition about the noise would be fixed if it's too loud, the condition that if it's, if if the agreement is acceptable to the lawyers, or if it turns out that you need fifteen or eighteen spots instead of eleven spots, that agreement would be modified before this, the, the currency was granted. signage would have to go in, it's like
Let me interject, David. I I'm comfortable moving it two weeks. I mean, it does seem to me from hearing all of you speak that nobody has any real objections with this. And honestly, it's going to take me a while to get a contractor anyway, and I feel like I'm comfortable that you guys or at least on board with this idea, as long as I can do what I say I'm going to do, which, you know, we're going to get everything done. I'm just gonna, as long as I can go ahead now, and that's not up to you, but I I feel confident in he's trying to start to reach out to people and try to schedule this thing, and that's ultimately what the biggest delay is going to be for me.
And if if I'm correct, there's nothing, there's nothing preventing from Josh to conduct business currently, is there?
No, what you mean, what, put a tent? I mean, what are you?
No, no, right, with 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 the existing situation he has here.
That's fine.
Yeah, and now, and and I just to point out, whatever, you know, I would like there to be some clarification, you know, they were, numbers are thrown around eleven, thirty, eight, forty. You know, right now, you're asking for an addition that will allow forty additional. Right now, there's forty seats sitting outside your restaurant as we speak. And, you know, it sounds to me like you're you're allowed to operate like that for now.
Oh, yeah, I mean, obviously.
That's a, and a hundred and fifty-four seats inside. That's a sizable amount of business, I think. So I I agree.
But I also, I have sixty-five employees. I have a tremendous amount of overhead, you know, so there's there's a lot that goes into having a large business like that. The the problem, and obviously with adding double the seating that I had outside, it's because of the demand and the demand for people to want to sit outside.
Yeah, I I I do appreciate that. You're running a business, Josh. I appreciate that. My my point was just poorly made that it's really not an all or nothing thing. You know, you're not you're not getting a seat in this sist, and if you've just said you're agreeing that two weeks is not that much more if we can get this stuff resolved, I hope, as well as as well as David, I hope we can get the lawyer to get through this thing by then. You can get the correct number of spots.
Get the calculation done, get him to put the signage down.
Yes.
Everything done. We've seen, I don't know if anybody can see this because of my background or nothing. We 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 like the plan. We like the revised structure, which looks more fitting. And I think I don't think anybody on the board has an objection to the structure itself. We're just dealing with you know, the nitty gritty.
I mean, just have Ryan contact me when the lawyers are able to review that and make sure that we have the correct amount of spaces, and I can modify that agreement with Richard at any point. I mean, if there's any additional spaces needed, I guarantee you, Richard would be thrilled to get more money on this deal. So, I mean, I would certainly do that. I just need to know what that number is, and I I apologize if, you know, the eleven is the wrong number. I mean, that was the number I was given, and and obviously, it's up to me to figure that out. But, you know, I'm going to go to Warren. Unfortunately, he's away for next week and a half, but I want to get the changes made. I'm going to try to get as much stuff updated. As far as the the fans, I mean, I don't really know what I can do other than to show you the work that I am doing, which I did.
Josh, just to make light of that, I look back at all the emails from Warren. I have nothing that references anything with the fans, no contracts, no examples, nothing.
Really? I sent him the contract. I'll send it directly to you.
Yeah, and Ryan, can you con- contact the attorney and find out, we'd like an answer of the format of the contract. If we changed the number, that doesn't matter, but at least, but this is a good contract because, you know, we, you know, we had an issue several years ago, where there was a rental for parking spaces, and then the deal fell apart, and then the attorney said, well, there was a deal, and the village wound up losing out on that. So I want to make sure that that that's in there, and also contact the zoning, Esther Zoning Enforcement Officer on Thursday night, Ryan, to look at this plan, and he should tell us the number of of parking spots that are required.
I can cer- certainly share that with him, Chair. I I don't know if you recall, but the the zoning department did weigh in on this. Obviously, this was before Josh presented this agreement with the Church of the Messiah, and it was the recommendation of the zoning department that Josh seek an area variance for the parking. So the zoning department has has weighed in on this, and it was sort of put off to the side because Josh presented this agreement from the Church of the Messiah.
An area variance for how many parking spots?
For the parking spots that he needs to
A number.
A number, what, 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 whatever the forty seats. So if it's forty outdoor seats in the parking plan, it's, it's one space for every eight outdoor seats.
Right.
Eight divided by forty is five, so he would have to go and get an area variance for five, but that was sort of put off and on the back burner because Josh presented this agreement from the Church of the Messiah.
But the
The thing there, the thing there is seats removable, and and maybe they adjust according to the number in the party, right? Right now, there are forty seats as we speak outside, and they're asking for another forty, which is eighty.
Right, because those
Yeah, and one to eight means that. So I'm just, so the point is just someone should take another look at that chart that's that claims there's only so many current there and there. Yeah, and there's so many asked for, so.
Let me, let me, um, I don't, I don't remember the letter from the zoning enforcement officer. We should dig that up and have it. But my guess is what what happened is that it was originally approved for twenty-one seats for the existing seats that are there in the restaurant. And he's putting in five, the equivalent of five more spaces he needs. Twenty-one plus five is twenty-six. He's giving us fifteen. He needs eleven on the others, on the other lot. That's how they came up with that number. That would get us. And I just want some either a letter that says that's right from the Z E O or an approval from him, verbal approval that that's the number that we need to do. If it's some other number, we need to have that clear early enough so that they can amend the contract.
Because if you do recall, the seats inside and the seats outside for for Terrapin were approved under a different parking law.
Right, and for the Z E O as well. If you touch it, if you touch something, is it just five more spots, or now you come under the new code, and the new code calculations for indoor and outdoor dining have to be totaled up to the entirety of the restaurant? So really, clarify this, Ryan, with the C E O. Or 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 if you want me, I can chat with him.
I can print it off. I mean, I do not have a hard copy of the new version from Warren, but I don't think that should matter. I have the other hard copies from the other update from June seventh.
Josh has him homework to do with with Warren. I want to make sure our homework with the Z E O and the lawyer makes sure that this gets done at the next meeting.
Sure.
Right?
So
Do we want to close the public hearing?
Is that the consensus of the board?
Yes, unless there's somebody who wants to speak.
Is there anyone else in the public that wishes, that wishes to comment on this proposed application?
All right.
Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Terrapin Restaurant. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Michael Gee?
Hi.
John Clark?
Hi.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
David Miller? Aye. Okay, that's close.
Okay, so just for some context for those listening in and those that are watching, what this basically means is the public hearing is is closed, but the application will continue to the July meeting for a further site plan review between the planning board and the applicant Terrapin Restaurant.
And as a clarification, that's July fifth?
Well, that'll be a decision, Josh, that the planning board has to review tonight. The outlook right now is June nineteenth.
Well, we're not sure about that because
They're not sure about that.
July.
Over the agenda at the end of the meeting and pick some days.
But I will definitely reach out to you and Warren once I have a definitive answer about the July meeting.
Now, if I can go over some points that I think need to be resolved before that meeting on the site plan, just to button up things so that we don't have to do a bunch of conditionals. We'd have to come up with an agreement on the number of spaces required to satisfy the zoning law and what the zoning enforcement officer said for this property. Number one, the 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 legal agreement, if it's only going to be for two years, has to have some provision in it that if the parking is not renewed and is not available in two years, the applicant has to come back to the planning board. But they can't continue business there and for the extra forty seats or whatever it is until that's resolved. So that provision, I think, has to be in there so we don't get hung up two years from now. I think the fan has to be identified, which is the noisy fan, and the assurance has to be that that's going to be fixed. You're on the side, you should
How can we identify?
Let me just finish this whole ring before you start answering here. So you have to determine which is the noisy fan. If you, if you have any questions, talk to Rachel and make sure that the noisy fan is fixed. I think we need signs and location of where the signs are going to be to provide, provide public notice of where you can park and where you can't and what hours. I think the sheds have to be, any sort of accessory structures have to be within, have to be set back five feet from the property line, from the side property line. They have to meet the village setbacks for accessory buildings. And that has to be shown on the plan that there's a dimension there. They, and there was a request, and I think it's reasonable to provide some extra plantings along the front of the parking lot. So that between the sidewalk and the first space, there'll be some four-foot plantings or something that'll break up that direct view into that parking lot, just in case it tends to get messy again. The specifications for the lighting should be shown on the site plan, and they should be full cutoff and in the range of three thousand K temperature, either thirty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred, something in that range, so that it satisfies what the advice of the planning department is. And there should be a sidewalk connection between the handicap aisle and the front sidewalk, so that that provides an ADA compliant path between the ADA space and the front door. Those are the ones that I have.
Got them all. All right.
I, I mean, the only comment I have is identify a fan that one person subjectively says is noisy. I I mean, like Jeff's saying, it's, I I mean, I could use a a noise meter. I I just don't even understand how to do it. I can tell you that I am replacing the oldest fan that I have. I and I don't see how I'm in violation of anything with the fans I currently have, just because Rachel says that she can hear my fan noise.
Well, she's not the only one that the person that's in the financial services also said that he was concerned about the noise coming from the fans, and me and other members of the planning board have been on the street, and it's, it's loud and noisy.
Mike, I totally get it. I just want to know what code I'm violating. You know, it's a restaurant.
Peaceful, enjoyable use of your property might be being denied by your, by your noise to your neighbors, and we're just trying to find a way. Now, after the last meeting, I I the next morning, I went on sound mitigation, and there are dozens of companies and and things out there that can put dampers and little structures around fans, and, you know, you, you have to, this is your property. You have to figure out which of your pieces of machinery is causing the noise that are disturbing to your neighbors, and you're the one that if you want approval, you have to, you know, reduce it down so that it's not a noise anymore. And just saying that you're going to do it isn't enough for our status to satisfy our votes. You have to be able to show you know, things from manufacturers or from, from, you know, people who are sound engineers. You just can't say, oh, do it.
Which fan are you changing? The, the, the side fan?
One of, it's the biggest fan on top of the building. The largest.
Because the one on the side, when I passed by, was making noise, but not that loud, and certainly if it was loud, your customers sitting in the new structure would be drowned out if it was that loud.
But it was there last year, and we didn't have a single complaint. I I mean, I just feel like the problem that Rachel's getting is from one of the high fans.
Yeah, it's got to be a high fan. Hopefully, it's the old one that you're fixing.
Yeah, that's going over the trees, or she said she cut down some trees, and that's when the noise started coming after she cut down a tree.
Alls I know is you promised to take care of the problem, and I expect to get that in a special sensitivity overlay zone. We have the right to ask for these problems to be taken care of.
I mean, let, let me just say that I promised that I was replacing that fan, and I am replacing that fan.
You promised to replace the objectionable fan.
I assume that the one that was old, that's that does rattle. I mean, it rattles rather loudly that I can hear, and it's the only one that makes a rattling noise because it is old, and I figured that that had to be the problem. But, you know, like, I, I, I want it to be fixed. I want everybody to be happy. Don't get me wrong. I I just I'm just afraid to get put in this situation where I can't figure out what it is that's the problem. Because it's a subjective thing, like to say, okay, well, Rachel becomes the arbiter of what's loud, and she gets to say, okay, I can hear that, and that's not good.
Jeff Christensen said it was loud.
No, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not just Rachel, and 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 Michael Gee just gave two more examples.
Hey, I'm going to jump in here real quick. I I know you guys are sort of going back and forth about this. We're not looking for final site plan review. But unless and we're not looking for final site plan review, but, um, unless something is a violation of a local law, like you're walking into really dangerous area here, I'm just gonna just point that out. Um, I'm, and, you know, Ben's gonna sort this out with Ken and they'll get together with Josh and Warren. But, you know, having something because people are experiencing a specific way when we actually have criteria in our village code on what is a violation of noise and what is not a violation of noise, like we need, we need to be real, we need to be really careful about that, that's, that's all I'm gonna say.
I'm gonna put Michael or Jeff saw eighty decibels as a jet engine, I don't think that, uh, it's making that kind of noise, we'll have to look at it.
Well, the police department has a, a sound meter, don't they?
Yeah, it's not eighty decibels, eighty decibels is like a jet engine, it's incredibly loud. Um, it's not that loud. So, uh, but, but again, I would like, yeah, that's a good thing for the Z E O to get that clarification. Maybe he can, uh, someone could make a trip over there, the building inspector, someone with the meter and see what kind of noise is making. It's nowhere near what is in the code, if eighty is correct, it's nowhere near that.
I would love that, I would love for someone to stand on the property line and write down the decibels that come from that fan. That would make me extremely happy and we could have a record of that, it's probably like five decibels.
It's not that low, but it's probably, it's probably like fifty or sixty.
I mean, if you're standing next to the fan, you can hear it, it's a restaurant, there's exhaust fans, every restaurant has exhaust fans.
It also do with distance as well, be standing in front of the stockbroker or be standing in Rachel's backyard and get different numbers, but I agree with Lydia, you can't, you can't, it's a sensitive area and I don't think, uh, we have that store in case for, but it would be good if the Z E O or the police department or someone has that and could actually make some tests out there. And that, what we don't have is, is the new structure, which a wall fan will be blocked off, uh, by that new structure. Bump all the sound going to in that direction, so it's only the top fans. All right, let, let's, uh, we need to move on.
Thank you for your time and, uh, I will do my homework. Hopefully see you sooner than, uh, the nineteenth of July, hopefully you guys have a meeting before that, but I will, I will get everything done.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Right, the next item on the agenda was Fifty-Six Living Street, but once again, Fifty-Six Living Street is postponing, so, so Ryan and I talked, we're gonna take this off the agenda as continued business. When they have a plan, when they're ready, they'll submit it to Ryan and we'll put it back on the agenda. So the last item of new business is a NuVance Hospital, which wants to make some sign changes, but if they appear to be, I think everyone's seen them, they appear to be only some words on the signs, uh, not much else. So who was here from hospital?
Hi, good evening, members. My name's Nicole, I'm here on behalf of NuVance. So, as you stated, NuVance is refacing three signs. The first sign we have is for the wound care, it's a replacement wall panel. There are two of these wall signs currently in place that would be removed or replaced. Each replacement sign is the same color with a metallic copper border and ivory face and black letters. Each sign of the two reads, "Wound Care, Part of Northern Duchess Hospital." The replacement signs are twelve square feet each, they're non-illuminated and they will replace the existing signs. The next sign we plan to replace upon your approval is the sign located at the birthing center. This is an existing freestanding sign, the sign panel measures two feet, eight inches by four feet, mounted on two posts. The scope of work for this sign is a face replacement measuring the same, two feet by eight inches, two feet, eight inches by four feet. The replacement face is non-illuminated, the face replacement matches the same color as the wound replacement signs, which is the metallic copper trim and ivory face and black letters, which read NuVance Health, New Garden Family Birth Center at Northern Duchess Hospital. Lastly, with your approval, we would like to remove and replace the wall signs located at the Healthy Aging Building. This sign is also non-illuminated and it is twenty square feet and reads NuVance Health, Healthy Aging at Northern Duchess Hospital. This sign is also ivory background with a metallic copper trim, black letters. I'm happy to answer, any questions you have pertaining to these signs?
Everyone seen the signs that, uh, Ryan sent out?
Are they any bigger than the existing signs?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are they any larger than the existing signs?
Not by my knowledge, no, I believe that, let me just pull up the drawings real quick if you don't mind, on my computer. I believe one of them is a few inches larger, the wall, the wall sign, that's replacing the Healthy Aging Building.
Ryan, do, do you have that sign that you could bring up or?
Nicole has a presentation, I was just, if she's able to bring it up and share her screen, I was giving her the, the opportunity to, if she runs into any issues, I, I can bring it up as well.
Do you want me to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, now, I have never shared my screen, Ryan, so you might be better off just doing that.
I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at them now, I could bring mine up if you allow me.
Um, I have the, sort of Nicole created a complete presentation, Jeff, so you wouldn't have to jump to, let, let me just bring up what, what I, what I've got, just.
I just think you see the signs a little bit larger.
So which one are we talking about first?
We are talking about the last one, it is the NuVance, the Healthy Aging one. That one is going to be a little bit bigger. Yep, that one's gonna be bigger by six inches.
So this is what exists now? On the, um, backside of the building that faces the, uh, emergency room entrance?
Yes, which is currently two feet by eight feet and they're proposing two feet, six inches by eight feet to make room for their logo adjustment.
I don't have a problem with that, it's not facing the street or anything.
And I believe the same is, is, is true, Nicole, also with the other sign, the wound care sign. It's, it's replacing in like the same size.
Yeah.
The wound care is, yep, so wound care is the same as like for like, it's the exact same size.
So, so basically it boils down to, they have an existing sign that says, "Wound Care Center at Northern Duchess Hospital" and they're replacing it with a like sign that says, "Wound Care, Part of Northern Duchess Hospital." Secondly, they have an existing sign that says, "The N D H Center for Healthy Aging" and they're replacing that with a sign that says, "NuVance Health, Healthy Aging at Northern Duchess Hospital", which is six inches longer than the existing sign.
Yes, sir.
And I think they both look very good, I'm happy with them.
Yeah, anybody have any problems with these, uh, three sign changes?
No.
No. Motion approved?
Second?
I'll second that.
Wow.
Okay, vote, vote, Michael Gee?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Hokesburg?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Okay, good luck.
Thank you, members of the board, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nicole.
I guess, um, we have two items, the, uh, uh, minutes of January fourth and the summer schedule and then we're going to make a motion to, to end the planning board meeting. We're going to then go into executive session with two candidates, uh, to replace Suzanne on the planning board and, uh, that's how we'll proceed. So I guess, uh, the minutes are January fourth, did anybody get a chance to look at them?
I, I did not, did they, did they come out in a, in an individual email or were they attached?
They were attached with.
Okay.
Email that, uh, had the agenda attached to it.
I apologize, I haven't had a chance to go through them.
I didn't get a chance to either.
Can we defer to the next meeting?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, the summer schedule, we had the two proposed dates, uh, and, um, and some people said they can't be here on those days. We had, we had Ju- July nineteenth and, uh, August sixteenth.
Correct.
And someone couldn't be on the sixteenth, someone couldn't be on the nineteenth. We could move, what if we moved them to the fifth and the second of August, that would give, uh, fair week and then we resume again the beginning of September. Who, who? It is the, is the fifth and, uh, we could, we could even do the twelfth because, uh, um, we'd still be on Zoom on the twelfth and then, or the village board will be meeting, but we won't be in conflict with them because we wouldn't be in the building.
July, you mean July twelfth, David?
Yeah, July twelfth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with July twelfth, resume and also.
I'm not, I'm not here on July twelfth, but.
Okay.
I have a beacon meeting on July twelfth, I can't be here.
Okay.
Okay.
July fifth?
I'm good with the fifth.
I'm good with the fifth.
Okay, so the first July meeting will be in two weeks, uh, on July fifth and then that means we could move the, uh, so, the August meeting up a bit. Um, we can't meet on the ninth because, you know, we don't, you know, we don't know, we can't conflict with the village board if the meetings have to be in public. So, August second would leave us, you know, a, a, a four-week gap until after Labor Day. So is August second, because people said they couldn't come on the sixteenth.
I'm good for the second, I can't do the sixteenth.
I'm good for the second.
I can do either.
All right, how's about that, then, August second? And we'll just have a, a gap through fair week and then we'll come back.
Okay.
That sound good?
Yep.
I need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the summer schedule would be July fifth and, uh, August second, returning on September sixth. And of course, if there's an emergency or something that has to be done, we can, uh, we can always have a, um, emergency meeting in August.
I'll second that motion, Jeff.
Okay, a roll call vote, Michael Gee?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Hokesburg?
Aye.
David Miller, aye.
So, um, Chair, before we move to executive session, uh, do we want, uh, John, I know you had emailed me about a house on South Street? Do we want to go over that right now?
We talked about that last week at our pre-meeting, Michael Gee saw the same thing.
Yeah.
That they put in those two solid windows, the previous owner, and the new owner was coming in to go back to, um, the eight over eight windows on the first floor.
Oh.
Is that correct?
So I have some pictures and sort of some information from the new owner that I can share.
Okay, good, thank you, Ryan.
Okay, let me just cue it up here.
Certainly doesn't look right now.
Right, we, and they did, they did authorizations, they made those changes without coming to the planning board.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the changes were made not by the current owner, it seems this occurred, uh, under the pre, the pre, the previous owner, unfortunately.
I only noticed it this week.
No, I noticed it a year, year and a half ago, I think it was cold weather and I mentioned it and it was like, we had no sheriff, so it just kinda, it was done real quick.
Yeah, another South Street resident pointed this out to me this week and asked, you know, we could bring that up. But I, and in fact, I walked by it and those two bottom windows look like they're permanent fixed frames on single pane, they don't, you know, it's, it's not like a sash, upper and lower sash window like the top, it looks like the other. Yeah, looks pretty, looks pretty permanent.
And they just painted it, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're coming in to put the ones back, that's great.
Yeah, that's what they're gonna be doing. And Ryan's, Ryan's in contact with them and they'll submit to us what they want to do when they're, when they're ready to proceed. But they want to put it back, they're upset that that, the bottom, the, the first floor windows were, uh, changed without permission.
Yeah.
And they have the originals or are they gonna put replacements to match the originals, you know?
So, from the feedback I got from the current owners, they want to present to the board, um, some options because they're unsure if they want to continue with the eight over eight. They would like to, um, discuss with the board, um, you know, a set of options, um, that would be compliant under the historic district and also be, um, functionality and feasible, because I guess, um, there's a, a pretty serious heat loss with, um, the current, um, win- windows. They are proposing some type of double hung, um, for the two picture windows downstairs. Um, I think it's going to be up to the board to navigate with the applicant exactly, um, the style of double hung and, and all the other, um, features, um, that go along.
Ready, they'll, they'll contact Ryan and then they'll come to us to talk about it.
If they contact Ryan, the advice I would give is to find older pictures and so that they know what the historic pattern was at least twenty, thirty years ago or whenever the survey was done in the seventies.
You look at seventy-nine pictures, let's do it.
Yeah, and see what it looks like and try to match that, would be my advice. If you want to put in double pane glass, you can do that, but have exterior mon- mountains that match the old pattern.
Sure.
Good. Anybody have anything else and then we can, um, vote to, uh, end the meeting and go into executive session?
So, as a reminder, Chair, uh, the, the, the motion for executive session is that we are, uh, discussing, uh, personnel matters, you have to make the motion clear as to why you're voting to go into executive session and that, you know, no vote will be taken that will affect the public in any way.
We could, I think we can make one motion to end the meeting and go into executive session for personnel matters. I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, Michael Gee?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Hokesburg?
Aye.
Uh, David Miller, aye, and Suzanne is, is, has decided not to participate in the, uh, four of us, okay?